Welcome back to City Hall, everyone. I'm going to start with some public service announcements that we haven't heard in a while. And we might actually need them because we might have forgotten. For emergency, please note the exits on either side of the chambers and proceed down the stairs. Bathrooms are located out to the door. Women's room is to my left and men's room is to my right. We do allow 30 minutes for public speaking. I don't know if we have a sign-in sheet, but you could just, Mr. Raffalco will tell us if you want to speak when we get there if we haven't put it out. And this meeting is now called to order at 7:35 PM on July 13th, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and equal to all.
You may be seated. May I please have roll call? Alderman Ventura Morel?
Here.
Alderman Coop?
Here.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Here.
Alderman Worthington?
Here.
Alderman Tolloman?
Excused.
Alderman Davis?
Here.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Excused.
Alderman Shabbat?
Here.
Alderman Hirsch?
Here.
We have a quorum. Can I have a motion to dispense with the minutes of the previous meeting and approve same?
Motion by Tony Davis, second by Rennie Scott Childress.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adopted seven to zero. Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the general bills?
Motion.
Motion by Steve Shabbat, second by Rennie Scott Childress. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is adopted seven to zero. We're now entering into the public speaking portion of the meeting. We have allotted 30 minutes for this purpose. You'll take the seat up at the bench at the end of the table. Please state your name and address on the record before you address the council and note that council members cannot engage in debate during this time. Mr. Raffalco, would you like to speak? If you could, thank you. Mr. Raffalco, the button, you just have to press the button here and then it'll turn, yeah, and then it'll turn green and you know you're ready to go. It's not green? There you go.
Thank you, Council President. It's been a while and I'm not going to go over tonight all the old things that you've done. I'll save them. There'll be enough time to bring them to the table later. I have something else I want to bring to the table about vehicle speeding. I want to make the long story short, so I'll pick it up where the, I'll quote, "the officer involved." Okay, so we'll start there. If you want me to go deeper, I don't think you're going to like it, okay? You go deeper on the side. You can ask me privately and I'll tell you. So, officer comes and stops at these residents' home and says that they want to file harassment charges against this resident for going up the street, in a public street, taking down the license plate numbers of the cars that speed in the street. They don't live there, but they speed 60, 70 miles an hour. The officer comes to the residence home and says they want to file harassment charges. You can't go there and tell them not to speed, okay? And filing countercharges doesn't work anymore in court. And I'm quoting the officer, okay? They said, "We didn't know who they were, who it is, but we know the vehicle that he's driving and he lives down the street." Officer says, "I knew immediately who it was. They're chronic complainers." Okay? This is the officer speaking, all of this, okay? "I knew immediately who it was, chronic complainers." The residents checking their records only complained twice, once in 2017 and once in How the officer knew this resident's name is beyond me unless he was friends with these Now, the officer continues to say, "You better be prepared for hazy because he's going to do this to you," okay? Now, the patrol vehicle has been seen numerous occasions, two and three times a day, maybe three, four, five times a week, also parked on the street in a public space, maybe doing their records or whatever. This, prior to June 16th, the neighborhood was patrolled. Now, these residents took this issue up with the chief of police. They wanted to know if this officer had some intertwined relationship with these people where he practically threatened the people who he wants to file harassment charges against you. Would he try to scare the residents with that and you can't file countercharges? Well, since June 16th, there hasn't been one patrol car on the street. Oh, and the chief of police, "I'm very concerned with the speeding on the street." And the officer, there is no issue with speeding on the street, which is not true. Now, that being said, the police failed to protect these residents from this harassment of these speeders with their race cars, okay? Loud exhausts, whatever they have in these cars, okay? And they've asked me, and they don't know what to do about it. I want to know what this administration is going to do about it, okay? And it's not going to go away like all of the issues that this administration has done, like committing to spend millions of dollars without council approval, okay? Signing contracts without council approval, okay? Rennie's writing everything down. He's got it all down. I'm glad he writes it down because I don't have to remind him of the things he's done, okay? But I will eventually down the road. It will be not forgotten. That being said, I'll save the rest for the second reading of the Ethics Board meeting when he has his public meeting on it, okay? With the Ethics Board, whichever you had, had no ethics, addressing charges without allowing the chargee to participate in the charges, shutting them out of the room, making decisions on their own. It's not healthy, it's not good, and it's time for a change. And I'm going to work very hard to make that change. And I thank you very much for this opportunity, and it's not going to go away. You had two years of operating in the dark. I mean, I'm not computer literate and I don't follow you on the computer, so this is my first opportunity to address this council, okay? I'm not going to let you forget, period. Cooking the budget up, hiding the money, okay? Paying off, I don't know, Tuitt, I think $20,000 raise of Tuitt, what, was that a payoff? I want to keep it current, but you know, the past has so much that was done, that was You're moving the money from the general fund to the non-aligned fund balance and sitting on it for two years and then facing an audit and then trying to buy it down so you look good in front of the auditor. I attended these meetings. I saw it. I'll quote Tuitt. When you bought it down about nine, eight million dollars, Tuitt says, "I think we'll be all right now." What does that mean, what does that sound to you, okay? What you were doing, okay? Finding, well, anyway, I'll save it for another time. You conduct your business. It won't go away, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raffalco. Sorry, I had technical difficulties I was dealing with. Apologize for standing up while you're speaking. We're going to, we're going to take two minutes and see if we could fix this technical difficulty that livestream is not working, so if you could just hang tight for two minutes. Hello? I could, can you, you could hear it through your phone? I could sing a song if you want, but, oh, there's always a delay, yep. There is my voice. Please report to the chambers. Thank you for your patience, everyone. We now have the livestream going. We are now closed out of public speaking unless Ariel wants to speak. All right, so we now enter into Claims and Communications. Hearing no discussion, they'll be on file in the Clerk's office. Can I get a motion to dispense with the second reading of the general bills and pacing? Motion by Alderwoman Hirsch, second by Tony Davis. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is adopted seven to zero. We're now entering into the Report of Committees, starting with Resolution Number 116.
Resolution 116 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer in the City Clerk's Department in the amount of $2,000 to pay the expense of repairing and replacing the electrical boxes on the bulkhead of the city docks.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 117, please.
Resolution 117 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer in the Department of Public Works in the amount of $14,000 to cover the expense of traffic control construction materials.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 118, please.
Resolution 118 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer in the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $5,000 to cover the expense of supplies and equipment for the beach and pool season.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 119, please.
Resolution 119 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer in the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $60 to cover the cost of signage for the Kenneth G. Bryant Jr. Memorial Basketball Carts.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 120, please.
Resolution 120 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer in the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $1,500 to cover the cost of movies under the stars this summer.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 121, please.
Resolution 121 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, requesting an amendment to the Code of the City of Kingston in Section 350-17 Subsection B, removing the term "free-on" and replacing it with the term "refrigerant."
Alderman, Rennie Scott Childress?
I just believe that the word "refrigerant" doesn't have a D in it. If we could check that.
All right, thank you, that'll be fixed. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no more discussion or spelling checks, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 122, please.
Resolution 122 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, requesting a transfer in the Assessors' Office in the amount of $168.82.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 123, please.
Resolution 123 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to expend funds and execute any and all related documents for the New York State DEC Urban and Community Forestry Grant for a citywide planting project. And I do see the typo, Rennie.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 124, please.
Resolution 124 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, adopting the standard workdays for elected and appointed officials in the New York State retirement system.
On the question? Alderman, Tony Davis?
Yes, Madam President, I'll have to excuse myself since this is in regard to my work schedule.
All right, thank you. Tony Davis has recused himself. Alderwoman, Michelle Hirsch?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm also recusing myself as it relates to my work. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution passes five to two. The two votes were, of course, the two recusals, Alderman Davis and Alderwoman Hirsch. Moving to Resolution Number 125, please.
Resolution 125 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Program in the amount of $770,000 to construct the Kingston Point Park Phase Two project.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution 126, please.
Resolution 126 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation Heritage Area Program in the amount of $500,000 to construct the Kingston Point Rail Trail Phase Two project.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I will call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution 127, please.
Resolution 127 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation for an Environmental Protection Fund Parks Program Grant in the amount of $500,000 for health and safety repairs and upgrades to the Deed Stadium, Grand Street, and exterior envelope.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 128, please.
Resolution 128 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation Recreation Trails Program in the amount of $250,000 to purchase trail maintenance equipment for the City of Kingston Parks.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 129, please.
Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the New York State Department of Conversation in an amount of $10 million to implement improvements to the Kingston wastewater treatment plant? $10,000, I'm sorry. Yeah, I have an extra zero.
$10,000 or $10 million?
It's $10,000?
$10,000?
I believe it's $10,000. What's on the inside?
I think it should be $10 million.
I think $10 million.
It's $10 million.
No, this is right. That's right.
Are we good? Does it say $10 million?
Yeah, it's $10 million.
Yes, it's $10 million. On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 130, please.
Resolution 130 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, endorsing support for the Jewish Federation of Ulster County, Inc., for a grant from the Environmental Protection Fund under the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation for the Rayer Bakery Restoration Project, which will include comprehensive repairs and upgrades to the exterior envelope of the Rayer Center 101 Broadway Building.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 131, please.
Resolution 131 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, endorsing support for the Transart and Cultural Services, Inc., for a grant from the New York State Empire State Developmental Market, New York, program for a marketing initiative to promote Pinkster 2022.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 132, please.
Resolution 132 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, endorsing support for Transart and Cultural Services, Inc., for a grant from the Environmental Protection Fund under the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation for restoration of the Berger Matthews House at 105 to 107 Henry Street.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 133, please.
Resolution 133 of 2021. Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing adding additional lettering to the facade of Kingston Police Headquarters and a plaque inside Kingston Police Headquarters honoring the late Kingston Police Chief James Riggins.
On the question? Alderman, Steve Shabbat, please.
Yes, I'd just like to make a comment. This has been a long procedure, a long time coming to honor a, an individual who dedicated his entire life to public service and died in office. We had some bumps along the way, but I'm glad to say we are hopefully at the finish line here with this, but I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Corporation Counsel Kevin Bryant for his persistence in getting us answers when we needed them and also for Tony Davis, Chair of the Public Safety Committee, for his patience with this. Thanks, everybody. I think this is, this is well done.
And thank you, Steve. Alderman, Tony Davis?
Alderman, Tony Davis here, and I'd like to say thank you to Steve Shabbat, who was the Chair of Public Safety when this initially began several years ago, I believe, and he started and he passed on the mantle to me. And again, I would like to thank the committee members for getting this done and hopefully we can move forward with this and get this lettering on the building sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is passed, seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 134, please.
Resolution 134 of 2021. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to traffic on the public streets of the City of Kingston, New York, adding handicap parking on Wall Street.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution Number 135, please.
Resolution 135 of 2021. An ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Kingston, New York, amending Section 390-82 penalties for offenses.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to Resolution 136, please.
Resolution 136 of 2021. An ordinance amending an ordinance in relation to the traffic of the public streets of the City of Kingston, New York, removing a traffic signal at the intersection of Greenkill Avenue at at Wilbur Avenue and adding an all-way stop intersection.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? One opposed. So, resolution is adopted six to one. The opposition vote is Alderman Rennie Scott Childress. Moving to resolution number one thirty-seven, please.
Resolution one thirty-seven of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York amending section three-nine-zero dash one-zero-three, Schedule twenty, loading zone.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to resolution number one thirty-eight, please.
Resolution one thirty-eight of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York amending section three-nine-zero dash one-zero-three, Schedule twenty, loading zone.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to resolution number one thirty-nine, please.
Resolution one thirty-nine of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York prohibiting the use of all-terrain vehicles on public and city-owned properties and referring same to the Finance and Audit Committee for consideration of the related fees on the fee schedule.
On the question? Alderman Michelle Hirsch?
Yes, this is Alderman Hirsch. I'd just like to say that I'm fully in support of this resolution. I've received a lot of complaints from constituents regarding these vehicles on the streets and the nuisance that they become and a public safety hazard, so I will be a yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman Tony Davis?
And Alderman Tony Davis here. As I stated yesterday during caucus, and signage would have to, this would have to be posted in the fees, or will this be delayed?
You're talking another one.
I'm talking another one.
Yeah, this is the, when we get to one forty-three.
But my question on this, though, will this be enforced before we get the fee schedule, or it can't be enforced into the fee schedule? Into its, put on the fee schedule?
Oh, good question. I guess we could talk to Chief Tinty about that and make sure he's aware that the fee schedule hasn't been completed. Would you like me to do that?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to resolution number one forty, please.
Resolution one forty of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York amending chapter two-seven-seven dash two and two-seven-seven dash three and referring to the Finance and Audit Committee for the purpose of establishing a hotel licensing fee.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to resolution number one forty-one, please.
Resolution one forty-one of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York amending section three-nine-zero dash five-six, Article seven? Is that right? Prohibiting parking at an EV charging station.
On the question? And to answer your question, Tony, DBW is going to be putting up the signs.
Thank you. My question from yesterday in regard to, now you're going to be putting the signs up. Alright, thank you.
Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to resolution number one forty-two.
Resolution one forty-two of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York approving the settlement between the city of Kingston and three of the defendants in the Washington Avenue Tunnel lawsuit.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to resolution number one forty-three.
Resolution one forty-three of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for the Peaceful Guardians Project and transferring twenty thousand dollars for project, excuse me, for program costs.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to resolution number one forty-five, or one forty-four, please.
Resolution one forty-four of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York amending the fee schedule to change all instances of the brand name Freon to the substance name refrigerant.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to resolution number one forty-five, please.
Resolution one forty-five of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance for the sum of two hundred and forty thousand dollars for the Elmandorf Street Bridge project construction and construction inspection costs and making a secret determination for the project.
On the question? Alderman Tony Davis?
Alderman Tony Davis here. As I stated yesterday in caucus, and I have been a proponent against these, and these bids that come back in, overbidding.
I'm sorry, Tony, do you mind moving the microphone a little bit closer?
Sorry. I've been a proponent of, lately, of these bids that are coming in, overbidding after we've been told what one price is going to be, and then it seems like many of these projects come in, overbid, and we have to, the department has to come back to request more funding. And, but again, after talking to the city engineer, John Show Tyson, and city comptroller, John Tuie, and yesterday at a special finance meeting in caucus, and with this additional funds over a twenty-year period is only going to be about twelve thousand dollars if you spread it out through that. So I think it's worth the cost, additional cost, to get this street back open and to get this pass this way and, and secure and safe, and so I will be a yes vote on this.
Thank you. Anybody else on the question? Hearing no more discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Moving to resolution number one forty-six.
Resolution one forty-six of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of an additional two hundred and forty thousand dollar bonds of the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York to pay costs of the Elmandorf Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project and enforce said city. Alderman Venture Morrell?
Aye.
Alderman Coop?
Aye.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Aye.
Alderman Worthington?
Yes.
Alderman Tollerman?
Excused. Sorry.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Excused.
Alderman Shabbitt?
Yes.
Alderman Hirsch?
Bond is adopted seven to two. Moving to resolution number one forty-seven.
Resolution one forty-seven of two thousand twenty-one. Resolution of the common counsel of the city of Kingston, New York authorizing an amendment to increase the bond ordinance dated September sixth, two thousand seventeen, for three hundred and thirty-seven, three hundred and thirty-seven hundred, one hundred and thirty-two dollars, by fifteen, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, to the total of four hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars in order to fund the historic bluestone on the two blocks of Henry Street Safe Roots to School.
That's a lot of numbers.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution is adopted seven to zero. Next resolution is one forty-eight, which is also a bond ordinance that will do long roll.
Resolution one forty-eight of two thousand twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of an additional one hundred and fifteen thousand dollar bonds of the city of Kingston, Ulster County, New York to pay costs in connection with the Henry Street Pedestrian Improvement Project and enforce said city. Alderman Coop?
Aye.
Alderman Scott Childress?
Aye.
Alderman Worthington?
Yes.
Alderman Tollerman?
Excused.
Alderman Davis?
Yes.
Alderman O'Reilly?
Excused.
Alderman Shabbitt?
Yes.
Alderman Hirsch?
Yes.
Alderman Venture Morrell?
Bond is adopted seven to two. We are now moving to the second reading of Local Law Two, followed by the vote.
Local Law Two of two thousand twenty-one of the city of Kingston, New York authorizing an amendment to Local Law Five of two thousand sixteen, amending Ethics, Chapter forty-nine, Section five, B, four, qualifications of members of the Ethics Board of the Code of the City of Kingston.
On the question? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Opposed? Local law is adopted seven to zero. That concludes our communications. Before we conclude our meeting, does anybody have anything? Alderman Tony Davis and then Alderwoman Worthington?
Getting old here. I'd like to close the meeting in honor of, and usually close the meeting, and many of us close the meeting in honor of someone that's passed away, and I want to honor somebody who's still present. And Marie Lang Idella, who will be celebrating her hundred-year birthday on July fifteenth this Thursday. She was born July fifteenth, nineteen twenty-one, Kingston, New York, Pocockee area, to Margaret and Louis Lang. Nineteen thirty-four, she graduated from St. Mary's School Grammar. Nineteen thirty-eight, she graduated from Kingston High School. Nineteen forty-one, she graduated from Kingston Hospital School of Nursing. Several jobs, working at the Benedictine thing, the Kingston Hospital, working at the Wilmington Delaware Hospital. In nineteen forty-two, she married Frank Idella at St. Mary's Church. Mr. Idella has passed away. They celebrated seventy-one years of marriage before Mr. Idella passed away in two thousand and fourteen. Mother, six children, which includes Gary Idella, Donna Brady, who works for the city, Jimmy Idella, Alan Idella, Ann, Paula Castro, and Paul Idella. Ms. Idella is currently residing at the Bertrords at Chamber School, lifetime resident of Kingston, New York, belongs to the St. Joseph Parish, and New York State Nursing Association, she's Girl Scouts and Little League, et cetera. Remarkable life in many a, and honors in a hundred years, a hundred beautiful years. So, I just wanted to close in member, or in honor of Mrs. Idella, who's again, celebrating a hundred years on Thursday. Happy birthday.
Thank you, Tony.
Yep.
Yay.
Happy birthday. Alderman Rita Worthington?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to close the meeting in honor of Dr. Albert A.J. Williams Myers. He was a professor emeritus of Black Studies at the College of New Paltz, and he passed away on yesterday, July twelfth. Professor Williams Myers was a former Chair of the Department of Black Studies at SUNY New Paltz. He wrote, I don't even know how many books, but most notably, the book that I read was The Middle Passage Transatlantic Sleeve Trade. He was a dedicated educator, a brilliant-minded historian for the city of Kingston as well. In twenty-seventeen, he received the Heritage Award from the college, and also, most notably, in twenty-seventeen, he was honored with the, when the A.J. Myers African-American Library opened in his namesake down on Gil Street. And so, we, I had the opportunity to sit under his teaching, to listen to some of his speeches. He was a frequent guest at our church, and especially during Juneteenth, and it was just a pleasure to know him and a pleasure to sit under his teaching. So, he will be missed, and we certainly send deepest condolences to his family and his friends.
Thank you. His legacy will definitely live on here in Kingston. I'm going to close in memory of two different people. I want to close in memory of Patricia Richters, who was a resident at Yasmin Towers. I had the pleasure of meeting her during some ward meetings at Yasmin. She was also the mother of Clark Richters, who we all know and are fond of. So I just want to send my condolences to Clark and the rest of the family. I also want to close in memory of Alyssa Turner, a young mom of two and a certified nurse's assistant here in Kingston. She passed away unexpectedly on July fourth. Her grandfather, Alan Nace, serves the city of Kingston as the Chair of Ethics Board, as well as on the Public Works Commission and the Parks and Rec Commission. So I want to send my condolences to Alan and the family of, the rest of the family of Alyssa. Is there anybody else? Hearing nobody else, I will take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Tony Davis and second by Rennie Scott Childress. All in favor? Opposed? We hereby stand adjourned until the next regularly scheduled meeting on August third, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you all. Good to be back.